Everybody ready?
I'm ready.
Everybody ready? I call to order a regular meeting of the President and Board of Trustees of Machesney Park, Illinois for Monday, July 6, 2015. Please stand for invocation led by Pastor Heath Tippett, First Baptist Church of Machesney Park, and the presentation of arms and pledge of allegiance led by Korean War veterans Number 272.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you so much that you are a God who cares about what we do, and God, you are a God who gives us forgiveness and wisdom every time we ask for it. We thank you, Lord, for the forgiveness you've offered us in Christ, and we ask, Lord, tonight for wisdom. We thank you for our leaders, Lord, who are willing to devote their time to our betterment as citizens. God, we pray to bless their decisions, give them that wisdom, and we ask your blessings on this meeting tonight, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Column right, march. Present, march.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Forward, march. The Korean War started 65 years ago on June 25, 1950, when North Korea tanks across the 38th parallel, the boundary with South Korea. The war ended July 27, 1953. China, North Korea, South Korea, and the United States. The war cost the lives of millions of Koreans and Chinese, as well as over 50,000 American lives. So this evening, we thank the Korean Veterans 272 for your service to our country. Will clerk take roll call, please?
Mayor Boland.
Here.
Trustee Snodgrass is absent this evening. Trustee Johnson.
Here.
Kit.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Bailey.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Clerk is present, the attorney is present.
Thank you, Lori. We have a call. Next is approval of minutes from the June 15, 2015, board meeting. I entertain a motion to approve. Solemn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any discussions or changes? I hear none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes have been approved. Next, we have treasurer's report. Tom Yell.
Thank you, Your Honor. The treasurer's report reflects what the village received in building Machesney Road funds in the amount of $283,499.04, and the total of all funds as of June 30 was $9,912,259.74.
Thank you, Tom. I entertain a motion to accept the treasurer's report. Solemn. Do I have a second? Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The treasurer's report has been accepted. Next, we have communications. Lori Mitchell.
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, this evening, just like to announce the deadline for the July Yards of Distinction nominations will be July 17, and the winners will be announced at our next board meeting, July 20. This evening, Mayor Boland will be presenting Community Pride Awards to Rebecca Rogers, Alicia Selhausen, Samantha Hollis, and Amanda Owen, who organized a community walk for overdose awareness.
Thank you, Lori. On Sunday, June 14, there was a memorial awareness walk for drug overdose, and the organizers of the walk, Rebecca Rogers, Alicia Selhausen, Samantha Hollis, and Amanda Owen. And all of you have lost siblings or cousins to overdose. Your efforts brought to our community on how devastating that these losses are. Over 250 people joined you on Sunday for that first awareness walk. And in Winnebago County, 2014, there was 94 overdose deaths. 2015 to present, as of a couple of weeks ago, was 36 deaths already this year. So I, as the mayor, and trustees, and the staff of the Village of Machesney Park, we thank you for making a committed effort to making our community a better tomorrow, and we'd like to present you with a Community Pride Award. If I can get it open. It's there somewhere. Hold on to it. This is going to Amanda? And feel free to say something if you wish. They're sticking together on me here. Sorry. Okay, Samantha?
She's scared.
All right, Alyssa? All right. And then Rebecca.
I'm accepting the award for my, or that pride award, for my daughter Rebecca, so these girls worked really, really hard and think they made a difference.
We just wanted to say thank you for all of your support, and thank you to everyone who helped us organize this, and we're definitely going to make it annual, and we hope for your continued support.
Thank you.
That's all under communications tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, Lori. Next, we have warrants. Trustee Beck.
Thank you, Your Honor. This evening, the Administration and Finance Committee met and reviewed warrants totaling $547,774.87, and I move for their passage.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second? I have a second. Is there any discussions? Will clerk take roll call, please?
Trustee Snodgrass is absent. Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Kit.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays, and one absent.
Thank you, Lori. The warrants are approved. Next, we have administration reports. I'd like to report that coming up this Saturday, July 11, 2015, in front of Machesney Town Center, there will be a Machesney Park Family Festival. There will also be a carnival, starting Friday, the 10th, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and then Saturday, the 11th, and Sunday, the 12th. There'll be free entertainment. There'll be groups like Whirlbone Southern Outcasts, Shattered Picks. There'll also be Gina Meeks and a talent contest. There'll be free children activities by Harlem Community Center. There'll also be a flea market. The Fire Department will be doing displays. The Winnebago County Animal Control, Paul's Humane Society will be here. There'll be also fireworks at Machesney School grounds right around 9:20 p.m. And some of the sponsors of this are Ruby Ten Machesney, Tricky Enterprises, Rockford Park District, Practice Velocity, North Park Water, Rock River Disposal, Comcast, Harlem Community Center, Harlem District 122, and Village of Machesney Park. So plan for a fun weekend. I also had the opportunity today, thanks to Representative John Cabello, Representative Joe Sinowski, and Senator Stallman, and Chief Don Shovlin of the Harlem Rosco Fire Department. There was a little luncheon for the new state fire marshal, Matt Perez, and it is an honor to meet him. He's really a nice person. Next, we have Attorney Green.
No report tonight, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have village engineer Chris Dopkins.
Thank you, Your Honor. An update on projects that are ongoing throughout the village. First, just want to talk a little bit about weather here. Over the past few weeks, we've had quite a few rainy days, but we've kept the projects going. The contractors have kept the projects going. There are a certain number of things, though, that we just can't do in the rain. Pouring concrete and putting down pavement markings and that sort of thing is very weather-dependent, and that's some of the things that we're starting to get into on some of these projects. So the weather has a higher potential to slow us down from here on out. On 173, the contractor has shifted traffic to the inside lanes west of Burden Road, completed the topsoil and rough grading operations behind the curb and gutter on the outside of the pavement. They've been installing paper block in the corner islands. We do notice that there are some weeds out there, and those are either coming out through the grading operations, or they are set to be mowed. It's one of those things where every time it almost gets dry enough to mow, we seem to pick up just a little bit more rain. It's been a little frustrating. On Forest Hills Road, they're finishing backfilling behind the curbing. They've also switched traffic. They've installed the last mast arm and pole in the southeast corner of the 173 and Forest Hills Road intersection. They're completing the center medians and the rough grading along Forest Hills Road, and they're also removing temporary pavement markings on both 173 and Forest Hills Road. That work started today in anticipation of getting it back open to four lanes. Within maybe a week's time or so, if we have good weather, we could see 173 back open, Forest Hills fully back open between Forest Hills Road and Alpine Road. The contractors also placed the first concrete pours to the east of Perryville Road. The mainline pavement is actually in. It's getting ready for curb and gutter right now, and some of the bike path has also been paved. So things are coming along pretty nicely on 173. The median project, our median project, which will finish the medians that were from the first phase, is really set to begin next week. The contractor is verifying that the block is made and cured enough to undergo shipping. Assuming so, they'll have it shipped to the site, and things will start in earnest next week. So as one set of traffic controls is coming down, another set's going to start going up. Just as a reminder, we do have a closure in place for Alpine Road, the north leg of Alpine Road, and the north leg of the Service Drive. Those are two-day and one-day closures, respectively, to get the corner islands done at both of those roads. So as traffic control goes up out there, we'll be sure to let people know and drive carefully through the construction zone, as always. The Stones Landing Project, the project's basically 99% complete. Very pleased with how that came out. We're kind of down to punch list items out there now, and getting the electrical hooked up for the lights. The Leland Trunk Storm Sewer and the Pershing improvements, all storm sewers in minus where we have gas main conflicts. I think we've got two on Pershing. The Core Out of Pershing will be complete this week. The mainline curb is in on the east side of Leland. The mainline curb was set to be poured today, but it rained, so we're going to pour that tomorrow on the other side of Leland. On Gilbert and Wilshire, all the storm sewers in, again, minus a couple of gas conflicts that we're waiting to get resolved. The mainline curb is in on Gilbert, on both sides of the roadway. Wilshire, the north main was, north curb line was poured last week. The south side was poured today before it rained. On Liberty and Marquette, all the storm sewer again is in minus the conflicts. In all throughout the project, maybe we have half a dozen conflicts or so. Core Out on Liberty should be complete this week, and Core Out is going to be set to begin on Marquette this week. Just as an overall time schedule, when the project first began, the contractor provides us with a schedule, they were expecting to begin curb and gutter this week. We already have, say, 20% or so of the curb on the ground, so they're making very good progress out there. Lastly, out there, we did have a little bit of vandalism occur with the curb and gutter that was poured. We had some people walk through the fresh concrete, so we've asked people to be on the lookout and ask the sheriff's police to assist us in kind of keeping an eye on the area after the curb goes down. So if anybody sees anything, please let the sheriff's police know. Copper and Emerald improvements. All the sanitary laterals have been adjusted, and they're all the way to the storm sewer. 98% of the water services have been relocated. We've completed as much storm sewer as we basically can, with one exception. We're going to be doing some storm sewer work that's rather complicated at the intersection of Vanstone and Emerald. That intersection's going to be closed for about two days, starting tomorrow. We have to relocate a water main through that intersection, and there's gas mains that we're fighting, and everything's kind of at angles, so it's going to take the contractor a while to set up all their boxes, and it's going to be quite an undertaking. But once that's done, we'll have all the storm sewers in that we can. We're running into NICOR service conflicts, so we've put NICOR on notice. We're hopefully, we'll have a service crew out there where they can get the gas services out of the way, so the crews can continue to lay mainline storm sewer. If we can't, then the contractor's going to start Core Out on Emerald, beginning at Ruby and then heading east, just to keep the project moving and get as much work done as possible while we sort out things with NICOR. So hopefully, we won't come to a point where we run out of things to do out there. On the Melbourne improvements, all the storm sewer is complete. The concrete work in the center of Illinois 251 is complete. For the signals, all the handholds, foundations, and conduit is in the ground. The contractor's bringing in final stone, and they're going to shape and pave the center of 251 this week. And then, beginning next week, on the 13th, we're looking to close Melbourne, and that closure will be in place for up to two weeks of time while the contractor does the work at the intersection of Melbourne and 251. So all in all, that's going very well, too. The 251, excuse me, the 2015 resurfacing and the Alpine Road Service Drive projects, for those projects were opened last week and are on tonight's agenda for award. And that's all I have this evening, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next, we have public safety supervisor Sergeant Doug Bushman.
Thank you, Your Honor. For the period of June 12 through July 2, there were 1,250 calls for service in the village, 405 police reports taken, with 396 arrests. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Sergeant Bushman. Next, we have community development coordinators, Lucie and Matlock.
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to report on two major awards that were announced this week. Practice Velocity received an award from the Illinois Chamber of Commerce in conjunction with the Illinois Economic Development Association. They won an economic development award in the category of technology. And also, we had another award, a national award for excellence from metallic, from the metallic building company, and it's for the industrial design project at HMC Products, also located in Machesney Park. We're just very excited to see the community have the recognition and congratulate both of these companies. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Lucia. Next, we have committee and trustee reports. Do we have any reports this evening? Trustee Beck.
Thank you, Your Honor. This evening, the Administration and Finance Committee met and put two ordinances, two resolutions forward to tonight's board.
Thank you, Trustee Beck. Do we have any more reports? Trustee Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to thank Jake for getting back to me with the various zoning concerns we've had in our areas, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Trustee Johnson. Is there any more reports? I see none. The next item for consideration is the consent agenda. Are there any items that a trustee would like removed from the consent agenda to be considered separately? I see none. The consent agenda is accepted as presented. I will entertain a motion to approve all items under the consent agenda. Solemn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. May I have staff report, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight's consent agenda consists of Item A, Ordinance 3115, an ordinance amending Chapter 9 of the Village Code to decrease the number of Class B liquor licenses to a total of 13. This is the second reading. Item B is Resolution 38R15, a resolution to express the village's intent to declare a surplus within the 173-251 TIF district. Item C is Resolution 46R15, authorization for the placement of a yield sign at the intersection of Ventura Boulevard and Florence Avenue. Item D is Resolution 47R15, award a competitively bid contract to William Charles Construction for the 2015 pavement maintenance program in the amount of $678,399. And the final item is Resolution 48R15, award the competitively bid contract, a competitively bid contract to NTRAC Group for the Alpine Road Service Drive improvements in the amount
Thank you, Tom. Are there any trustee discussions? Trustee Kit.
Your Honor, I would like the lowering of the liquor commission to be taken off the consent agenda. I would like to vote no on that, so I apologize.
Tom, is that possible? It's already been approved?
Sure, it is possible, but I think we ought to deal with it by a motion. We've had a motion to approve the consent agenda. I think he should make a motion to remove 31-15.
May I please make a motion to 31-15?
Remove 31-15 and put it under unfinished business.
Please.
On the consent agenda, I have a motion under Item A, Ordinance 31-15, amend Chapter 9 to decrease the number of Class B license, second reading, to remove that from the consent agenda. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? The motion has failed due to no second. Now I have a motion and a second on the consent agenda as presented. Is there any more discussion? I see none. Will clerk take roll call?
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Kit.
Nay.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Mayor Boland.
Aye.
Five ayes, one nay, one absent.
The consent agenda has been approved. Next, we have unfinished business. Ordinance 26-15, granting a special use permit for 10253 North Second Street, Menard's, second reading. I entertain a motion to approve. I entertain a motion to approve. Solemn. I have a motion to approve. I have a second. Could I have trustee, could I have staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This ordinance is for a special use permit for the old Menard's store to be utilized as a warehouse for excess inventory. Staff recommends approval with conditions, and the Planning and Zoning Commission and Planning and Economic Development Committee voted to recommend approval, with the conditions that the use cease after one year, the parking lot be improved, the sign be improved, to be a solid white surface, the fence be repaired and stained, and that a sign be displayed identifying it as a Menard's warehouse. And Menard's Incorporated is on board with these five conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Is there any trustee discussions?
And to clarify on the sign, is it going to be on their windows, or is it going to be on an exterior standalone sign?
In talking with them, it probably will be on the windows.
Is there any more discussion? I see none. Will clerk take roll call?
Trustee Kit.
Aye.
Wilson.
Nay.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Mayor Boland.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Five ayes, one nay, one absent.
Thank you, Lori. Ordinance 26-15 has been approved for second reading. Next, we have new business. Ordinance 34-15, amend weed and plant regulations for the first reading. I entertain a motion to approve. Solemn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. This ordinance modifies Section 14.701 of the Village Code to make it unlawful for lawns and weeds to grow over seven inches in height, and then establishes the period for correcting that violation at seven days. The A and F Committee recommended approval of this, and I'll entertain any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Is there any trustee discussions? Trustee Kit.
You said lawn and weed. Does this include plants that are overgrown in people's yards that have very decorative yards?
The exact language is, "any weeds or plants other than trees, flowers, ornamental plants, or other cultivated plants."
Because the concern that was brought up during the previous committee were that animals, varmints, snakes, rodents live in the tall grass. If you have an overabundance of gardens, or trees, or plants, flowers, they also live in there. There's only a couple yards that I know of that are considered nuisances to my constituents. So when they were reading about the agenda, they want to know about the plants and that type of stuff. So maybe it's, I'd like to make a motion to lay this over, so I can call the other trustees and share their, my constituents' concerns with the exact addresses, so they can go look themselves. So that's my motion.
The only thing I'd, oh, you have a motion on the table?
I have a motion on the table to approve Ordinance 34-15. I had a motion and a second, and I'd ask for staff report.
I need a motion to amend.
And now, and now I have the motion to amend it.
Motion to lay.
Or to lay it over, I meant.
Sorry. Okay, I'll wait to see if it gets a second.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion to lay over Ordinance 34-15. Do I have a second? Motion has failed to lay over Ordinance 34-15. Now I have on the floor Ordinance 34-15 with a motion and a second and a staff report. Do I have trustee discussions? Trustee Beck.
Yes, I believe if you go into property maintenance code, it talks about not just weeds, rather than flowers. So you would have, you know, anything that's considered a noxious weed would be something that would be illegal, and this scenario that Mr. Kit described, and anything that's flowers are flowers. So I think it's defined and taken care of in that manner.
Thank you, Trustee Beck. Trustee Kit.
And I understand that. My concern is, we're talking about foxes. We talked about snakes. We talked about rodents. There's varmints that live in tall grass. Varmints also live in abundant, thick, forest-type areas, which sometimes, what some people would consider decorative gardening, is also considered maybe public nuisance, such as tall grass. And I agree with you, Mr. Beck, and thank you for pointing that out to me.
For clarification, flower beds are exempt from this. What are exempted are trees, flowers, ornamental plants. Thank you. Is there any more discussions? I see none. Will clerk take roll call?
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Mayor Boland.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Kit.
Nay.
Five ayes, one nay, one absent.
Thank you, Lori. Ordinance 34-15 has been approved for first reading. Next, we have Ordinance 35-15, amend promissory notes for first reading. I entertain a motion to approve. Solemn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. As I mentioned at the A and F Committee meeting tonight, this is just some revised language for the three promissory notes we have with Illinois Bank and Trust for the benefit of the village. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there any trustee discussions? I see none. Will clerk take roll call?
Trustee Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Kit.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Boland.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, one absent. Six ayes, no nays, one absent.
Thank you, Laurie. Ordinance 35-15 has been approved for first reading. Next, we have public comment. Do we have anyone who wishes to make a public comment? I see none. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So made.
All in favor? I have a second, I think. Surprised. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.